I'd like to call this regular Monday, 2nd, 2011 council meeting to order. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have some additions and corrections to the agenda this evening. Before I get to the agenda, you should all have in front of you two addendums. One is a, what would we call this, a parking agreement. And that has one typo. On the fifth line, location at semicolon, it should read 440 West Michigan Ave., not 4400. And then in addition to that memorandum, you should have a resolution in support of, this is what, the Michigan Main Street?
Agenda item 1125 replaces the agenda package.
Okay. Relating to agenda item 1125, also on agenda item 1125 under new business, we are subtracting the word "applying" in the third line and replacing "applying" with endorsing and promoting prompt application to the Michigan Main Street Select Program. So again, we're subtracting "applying" and adding endorsing and promoting prompt application. Then the final addition, actually, there's two more, excuse me. The next addition would be under new business, it's a light agenda item, excuse me, 11-72. I'm going to read it to you at this time. This is a motion to acknowledge the verbal report from city manager Campbell and to approve or not approve the location parking agreement between the City of Celine and Drunken Pig Productions, LLC, not kidding, that's what it's really called, for use of the parking lot at Curtis Park on May 11th and 12th, and to authorize or not authorize the mayor Pro Tem to execute said agreement. Okay, so that's under new business, item 11-72. And then the final addition that I have this evening is under discussion items. It will come after the tour of Washtenaw Bike Race, and it's a discussion on the MML Regional Meeting and hopefully a designation of somebody from city council to be an officer in that group. Any questions regarding the additions to the agenda this evening? Are there any other additions? Hearing none, I would seek a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Move to approve as amended.
Moved by Ivy, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gierbaugh. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We need to excuse the absence of Mayor Driscoll. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Moved by Gierbaugh, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Taha. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Moving on, we have a presentation this evening from Cindy Shupko relating to Michigan Main Street and the Celine Historic Downtown Alliance. Ms. Shupko.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. This is Jill Durnan. She is also on the Business Development Association Board in the Celine Historic Downtown Alliance. And also with us is Rebecca Schneider, Teri Sibokennig, and John Olson that are all on the board. So Jill is going to do the first part of the presentation, and I will be talking about the application process.
Thank you, everyone. As a history of the Main Street Program, back in 1980, the National Main Street Center, or sorry, the National Trust for Historic Preservation realized that many historic downtown areas were becoming neglected and created the National Main Street Program to help communities revitalize their downtowns. They developed the four-point approach, which has now been adopted by 40 states and over 2,000 communities, and Michigan's Main Street became a program in 2003. So what is Main Street? The definition's up there on the screen, but in a nutshell, it's a program structure designed to help communities revitalize their own downtowns. It provides a structure for the program so we can get down to the business of creating a vibrant downtown without getting bogged down in the organizational details. So what is the Michigan Main Street Program? It's a program that assists local communities in creating their own Main Street Program utilizing the four-point approach. It isn't a cookie cutter program where all communities end up looking the same. It gives us the tools we need to move forward with all the decisions are made locally and the focuses of our program are our own. It's not a grant program, but Michigan Main Street does give us a leg up on finding grants in the state that wouldn't otherwise we would be aware of. One of the benefits of the Michigan Main Street Program is that they provide their select communities with technical assistance, training, support, and networking opportunities, as well as they promote the events of each of their select communities all over the state of Michigan on their website, their Facebook page, and Twitter. There are three levels of participation in the Michigan Main Street Program. The first is the associate level, which we are in currently. And this level, we learn how different communities around the state have used the four-point approach to revitalize their downtowns. You stay at this level for at least one year, and it is the time to learn if Michigan Main Street is a fit for your community. The next level, the select level, you have to apply to become a select level community, and Michigan Main Street only takes up to three new select level communities each year. This is the intensive training part of the program. Michigan Main Street will send representatives and trainers to Celine to train the volunteers. And then after five years of being at the select level, you become a master level community. So this page here shows, actually quantifies, how the existing select and master level communities have improved their downtowns. Private investment has increased over $61 million and public investment over $34 million. There have been 118 new downtown housing units, for example, upper-story loft developments. Many jobs and new businesses have been created, and as you can see, the program is quite successful. So how does the Main Street Program work? It's based on the four-point approach. These are the four teams of volunteers that make up the program: design, promotion, organization, and economic restructuring. The organization team responsibilities include creating coalitions and partnerships with community groups, managing volunteers and staff of the Main Street Program, fundraising, public relations and outreach like Cindy and I are doing tonight, and then also managing the finances and day-to-day operation of the program. The design team's responsibilities include everything you see outdoors. This includes a design plan for common areas as well as building facades. For the select level communities, Michigan Main Street will provide design assistance for those businesses and building owners who are looking to update the look of their buildings but don't know where to start. And the design team also provides education and awareness of the overall community design plan and offers incentives to business owners to update their building designs. The economic restructuring team's responsibilities include assisting current business owners with any expansion plans or other business needs. They will also try to identify and attract new businesses that will fit the Main Street plan and work with developers to help fill empty properties and add housing units to the community. And finally, the promotion team's goals include creating an overall Main Street image for downtown and implementing an image campaign. We'll also promote retail and special events and promote tourism to the downtown district. They are supposed to make Main Street a recognizable name throughout the community. You may ask, how will the Michigan Main Street Program benefit Celine particularly? A strong, vibrant downtown creates a positive community image. This in turn will bring more people downtown and strengthen existing businesses, attract new businesses, and create new jobs. Also, by having a cohesive design plan, we can preserve our historic architectural resources. So the next step in the process toward coming a select community is applying for that select level, and Cindy's going to explain more about that.
Thank you, Jill. So currently, there are 21 associate level communities that may be vying for the select level, which is a very competitive process. We don't know how many of those communities will be applying for this level, but we hope to be one of them. There are 10 select levels right now, and as Jill said, they only will accept up to three communities. And those communities have to show several things, which is what I'm going to be talking to you about. Some of the key Main Street selection criteria includes widespread community support. So doing presentations like this, we're hoping that after tonight, we'll really hit the ground running and get out into the community, not just the city boundaries, but outside of those city boundaries, to include our townships, everybody that's affected by downtown Celine, that's who we're hoping to hit, and raise that level of awareness. We need to take an inventory of all of our assets, that includes our historic buildings and all of our businesses within that district. The district that we're proposing right now goes from Mills to Davenport and McKay to Henry, and that will have to be approved through the Michigan Main Street Program. Once we set the application in place, they'll come and talk to us, and we'll talk to them about that. Other assets, you know, what kind of calendar events do we have? What types of businesses do we have? How many employees are full and part-time? It's a complete inventory of what's happening downtown. We also need to show a five-year funding commitment, and that means that we have to show each-year budget that we can maintain this program for five years. And that's because Michigan Main Street will be committing to us five years of technical assistance worth over $200,000 at no cost to us or the city. So we're really looking forward to that. We have to prove that we have working boards and committees, and that means that our volunteers are actually hands-on and working in the community. We just don't hand off to our full-time manager, which is also a requirement of the program. And we have to show a strong volunteer base, and we hope to get that volunteer base from the entire community. We have, one of the steps that we took was to set up a 501(c)(3) organization because this will be a nonprofit entity separate from city government, and that is so that we can really build that volunteer base and make sure that we have a good base of community support. Some of the potential partners that we hope to partner with, because Main Street is all about partnering, will be working with the business owners downtown, the property owners, working with the schools, forming partnerships with them, the chamber, businesses outside of the district, our residents in our community, which are a huge resource for us and untapped potential, our youth of our community. We're hoping to see youth on our volunteer teams that Jill explained to you. Community organizations like Rotary and Kiwanis, all of them are potential partners for Main Street. Our campaign is called Route 12 to Main Street, which we're kicking off, and that is our awareness campaign and also our campaign to build support for the community, for this program. The application will be out sometime before October, and it will be due in December. So we have six months of hitting the ground running right now. We have about 20 volunteers that will be helping with this, and we hope to keep building that support from the community. So the community might ask, how can they help? We're looking for letters of support. Once they hear the presentation, we hope that they'll climb onboard. They'll help by spreading the word. We've created a Facebook page. It's called Route 12 to Main Street, and we hope that people share that with all of their Facebook friends. We are also in the process of creating a blog, and that will be launched within the next couple of weeks. It's ready to go. I want to get past this meeting tonight and hopefully the support of the city council. People can get involved. Just give us a call. And there are lots of volunteer opportunities on each of those teams of the design, the promotions, the organization and economic restructuring, and become a partner financially and show your support that way. That will be a main part of this program. So will we open it up to any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shupko. Ms. Durham, Mr. Law, do you have a question?
One concerning the outside communities that you mentioned about getting support from this. Did you at all yet approach those, like York Township, Pittsfield, and all those, to see what kind of support would be for this?
They are on our list. We have a two-page list of organizations that we'll be doing the presentation to, so we haven't gone to them yet. We have spoken to Rotary, the Youth Council, the School Board meeting, help me out, EDC, the Merchants Association, Celine Downtown Merchants Association. So we've done some of it, but we're really waiting, we're hoping to get past this meeting tonight and schedule all of those. Like I said, there's two pages full. That will probably take us all summer to get around, and we hope to have tables at different events that happen throughout the summer so that we can pass out. We're working on a brochure of information, and we're hoping to have that ready to pass out so that we can get the education out there. But yes, we're hoping to schedule at each of the township meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
That's a plan.
I'm sorry. Anyone else have comment or question? Okay. Thank you very much, ladies. If you'd hang tight, because we do have two subsequent, or actually three subsequent motions relating to Michigan Main Street coming up on our agenda in case other council members have questions or concerns. I do want to just note at this time, in addition to the great work that Ms. Durham is doing as a member of SDHA and as president of the chamber, I do really want to commend Cindy Shupko. In addition to doing this as a volunteer capacity, it's also what you do during your day job. And I've been thinking for some time, you're probably one of the community's best-kept secrets, and you really do an outstanding job. And I know you've done similar work in Howell and Tecumseh. So thank you for all that you do to hopefully make this Main Street concept come to fruition, and also all that you do in the community.
Well, thank you very much.
You're quite welcome.
Everybody does that. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and may comment or question on items that appear on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Mary Hess, Canterbury. I would like to speak on the new business Michigan Main Street. At the last meeting at Breckengrill, apparently the approval of a 36-inch pathway instead of a four-foot sidewalk was approved by council. Our code book says on Arterio Roads and Collector Streets, we are to have a four-foot sidewalk. The council has allowed a 36-inch pathway. So therefore, downtown, our southwest corner of downtown Celine does not have a sidewalk. I'm not too sure if in fact someone would get hit or hurt on that 36 inches of pathway if we could not be liable, because everyone else by law has to have a four-foot sidewalk. But the city council has allowed a 36-inch pathway adjacent to Breckengrill. To give you an idea, this is my shoulder. Well, approximate, okay? 20 inches. And I think Mr. Campbell, if he was next to me, we pretty well would do 40. Now, we're talking about a 36-inch pathway. I also have hands, so if you notice, the width of my shoulders and my hands are different. With age, I've been told I waddle. Okay? Now, the shoulders are pretty well starched. Your buttocks can get one to two ax handles wide. People have a right to be able to walk down the sidewalk. I don't understand why the other sidewalk cafes, which I have no problem with, I think they're great, have to have a five-foot sidewalk. But Breckengrill only has to have 36 inches. Two years ago, on his request from Breckengrill, he asked for eight tables on South Ann Arbor Street. He was approved for 10. I don't know why, his application said eight. The last one, he requested four tables on Michigan Avenue. He was given six. Now, we have 10 tables on the side, six on the front, two benches, do I still have time? Okay. Two benches as far as alongside of the South Ann Arbor Street, two benches in front of his building. It could probably hold about 70 people. And that's not what I consider a sidewalk cafe. That's almost...
Thank you, Mrs. Hess.
Thank you.
Moving on, oh, I'm sorry. Does anyone else have a comment? Okay, hearing none. Moving on to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of a citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Move to approve and adopt as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to our public hearings. Item, excuse me, 11-49, a fire special assessment for fiscal year 2011, 2012 fire protection. This will be a motion to the knowledge receipt of the April 26, 2011 memo from Finance Director Burgoyne.
Still moved.
Moved by Gierbaugh, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Taha. Mr. Burgoyne, would you like to comment?
Um, there are two resolutions before this body after a public hearing. The first is a resolution to approve paying the city's share of fire protection for the year 2011, 2012 in the estimated amount of $293,990. And the subsequent resolution is to take the position that the City of Celine will pay for these costs from its general tax dollars and not do an additional special assessment. So those are the two items that are before you.
Thank you, Mr. Burgoyne. Are there any questions for Finance Director Burgoyne? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
Move to open the public hearing.
It's been moved by Ivy, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Gierbaugh. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the issue regarding the fire special assessment for fiscal year 2011, 2012?
Move to close.
It's been moved by Gierbaugh to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Law. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. The public hearing is now closed. Now I need a motion to approve and adopt or not adopt Resolution Number Two, Special Assessment for Fire Protection, 2011 to 2012, approving the City of Celine's share of the costs and expenses for fire protection for fiscal years 2011, 2012 in the estimated amount of $293,990.
Move to approve and adopt.
Second.
Moved, Gierbaugh, second Ivy, to approve and adopt. Any discussion or comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Moving on, final motion is, I need a mover and a seconder to approve and adopt or not adopt Resolution Number Three, Special Assessment for Fire Protection, 2011, 2012, stating that the City of Celine will not exercise its authority to fund the operating and capital costs of the Celine Area Fire Department by special assessment for fiscal year 2011, 2012, but instead will fund its share by general fund tax dollars.
Move to approve and adopt.
Been moved by Rhodes.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Taha. Comments or discussion? I would just like to state again, and I know I have brought this issue up in the past, and I don't want to beat this dog to death because Mr. Burgoyne already addressed this, but I do want our general public who's in the audience this evening and who will potentially be watching from home to know that this council over the last decade, in all honesty, has been very responsible, very prudent, and very conservative in the way we spend and allocate money. And as such, we have continued to be able to fund our portion of the Celine Area Fire Department through general fund tax dollars and not initiate a special assessment, which would cause the tax-paying units of the city to pay more. And I think that's important, and I do also want to comment and thank, I believe it was Mr. Burgoyne, you inserted that small blurb relating to the fire special assessment in the last FYI newsletter. And I think it's sort of a cumbersome issue that not a lot of people understand, but I think it's important that they do. So thank you for doing that, Mr. Burgoyne. Any other comments or questions regarding this motion? Mr. Rhodes?
I would just like to say that I'm really comfortable with the budget as it was presented for our fire protection area. It's a very well-run group and very, I'll use the word frugal, with their funding. So I'm pleased to support this effort to pay it out of our general fund tax dollars.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Any other comments? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries. Moving on to unfinished business, item 11-25, Amendment to the City of Celine Strategic Plan for 2011, 2012. This is a motion to approve or not approve an amendment to the City of Celine Strategic Plan for 2011, 2012 by adding under the "sustain a vibrant town" section, a goal to support the development of the Celine Main Street Program by endorsing and promoting prompt application to the Michigan Main Street Program's select level. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Moved by Rhodes, is there a second? I'll second for discussion. Noting the absence of the mayor, Mr. Campbell, would you like to just speak on this issue briefly?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. As Mayor Pro Tem Marl mentioned, the mayor has offered this up to add to the fiscal year 2012, which would go into effect July 1, 2011, the goals, the strategic plan, to add to actually, I guess, to the sustain a vibrant downtown goal, to add another item to endorse the Michigan Main Street Program and submitting an application, just to show further support and tie that into one of the objectives to in fact sustain a vibrant downtown.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Are there any questions for the city manager? Mr. Gierbaugh?
Yes, I'm questioning why we need to put endorse in. Applying would be our goal to do it, and then endorsing seems like something that we as a council are voting upon as an action of this.
Mr. Burgoyne?
Well, the action, the application actually is from the independent body, the independent Celine Historic Downtown Alliance as a body. So what they're looking for is financial, moral, and other support from the City of Celine as a city body.
So we're looking for this document to better endorse our application that we're applying?
It's not our application.
Well, the application...
It's the application of Celine Historic Downtown Alliance.
Right, but it's to show a partnership.
Yeah.
Is that all you had, Mr. Gierbaugh?
Yes.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. City Manager Campbell? Mr. Ivy?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Marl. Would we not be served then, given Mr. Gierbaugh's comments, to include in the amendment to the City of Celine Strategic Plan endorsing and supporting prompt application of the SDHA to the Michigan Main Street Program?
I would certainly be amenable to that, Mr. Rhodes, as the mover of the motion.
Seems reasonable.
Okay. Would you restate your suggestion, Mr. Ivy?
Gladly. We would amend the amendment to City of Celine Strategic Plan 2011, 2012 to read, to approve or not approve an amendment to the City of Celine Strategic Plan 2011, 2012 by adding under "sustain a vibrant downtown," the goal to support the development of a Celine Main Street Program by endorsing and supporting prompt application of the SDHA to the Michigan Main Street Program, select level.
Mr. Burgoyne?
It's S-H-D-A.
Pardon me. S-H-D-A. Thank you.
Is everyone clear on Mr. Ivy's suggestion?
Yeah.
Okay. We will insert that verbiage there, noting that the mover and seconder, excuse me, have agreed. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Any discussion? I'll call the question then. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to new business, item 11-69, Michigan Main Street Program, Celine Historic Downtown Alliance. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the April 25, 2011 memo from Finance Director Burgoyne and to approve and adopt or not adopt the resolution of support for the Celine Historic Downtown Alliance to make application to the Michigan Main Street Program, select level. Is there a motion?
Move to approve and adopt.
Moved by Rhodes to approve and adopt, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Ivy. Mr. Burgoyne, would you care to go over your memorandum?
Um, yes. The, there is one change in the first paragraph, the first whereas, which now says that... uh, which now says that the city has adopted this goal in the Celine Strategic Plan for 2010, 2011. Otherwise, it's the same, um, resolution as before, which is a res- resolution of support for S-H-D-A to make the application.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Burgoyne. Are there any questions for Mr. Burgoyne?
Mr. Marl?
I'm sorry, Mr. Gearbaugh.
Um, just clarification on transparency and oversight, since it says here that, you know, the S-H-D-A is going to be a private entity until it becomes non-charitable, um, down the road, a year or so from now. How will information be presented back to us regarding donors and all that information? Since if we at some point are going to be contributing money to this organization, how do we keep the, um, information public?
Okay, um, the S-H-D-A right now is, um, an independent agency, and they do have the charitable nonprofit status right now. So if you contribute a gift right now, it is tax deductible. The method of communication, perhaps I, I should like the, ask the president of S-H-D-A respond to that, but as I understand it is, there's going to be very frequent communication, it's going to be like a partnership. There are no open meeting laws to the private agency, but they will report back, and in the, in the contract that we have with them, we will have both reporting mechanisms, and we will also require that their books are properly overseen each year, not necessarily a full-blown audit, which is actually too costly, but a CPA firm that, that reviews nonprofits and oversees nonprofits, uh, would help them for, file the annual 990 report to the IRS, uh, do their balance sheet, do their, uh, cash flow for the year, and make sure everything is proper, so that they can properly report that back to us. And on the individual projects and what they do, we will, we will see that, we will see that activity, we'll see them completed, and they will report back. We will not have every part of their meetings public because they're a private entity, but we will have a lot of reporting.
Ms. Shupko, would you care to comment? Yes, please, if you'd come to the podium.
It, it is our intent to maintain communication with all of the city council people and exit, um, also the Economic Development Corporation. So on a monthly basis, we want to report and update you on all of our activities and how we're doing. Um, we're going to be in awareness and, and this campaign for the next six months, so we're really not going to get off the ground until January as far as an organization exists. But we do hope to, you're all on our email list, and we hope to keep you updated through our blog and through other emails so that you know when our meetings are, and you know, you know, anyone is able to attend at any time, but the intent is to keep you updated on a monthly basis, at least some kind of a report.
Okay.
Was there anything else that you would like us to do?
No, it was more that, yeah, it was the idea of transparency and understanding what kind of reporting. I think this will become more probably part of the agreements when they're finalized, when the actual application, if it's awarded to us and accepted, then.
Right, we view this definitely as a partnership.
I mean, one of my concerns is just that I want to make sure that donors and such that nature, public citizens can get concerned when we're putting a large chunk of, um, tax dollars into an organization that has a pseudo-private oversight of it.
Yeah, totally understood.
Ms. Shupko, maybe you could comment, but it's my understanding that if the City of Celine or the, the S-H-D-A is certified as a Main Street Select Level community, that the new executive board would include a voting member from the city, and in addition to that, possibly some ex-officio officers who are staff people from the city.
I, I believe the city is going to appoint tonight an ex-officio member.
Correct.
And I believe that that's the way it will maintain, uh, remain. There are also several liaisons, city council members that are team members as well, so hopefully they serve as liaisons back to city council. But in addition to that, we hope to also be very transparent and provide those reports. If we become a select Main Street, and we're planning to do this anyway, um, monthly reporting is required, so everyone would see those reports. We want to make sure everybody sees what kinds of successes we're having, so that's a good thing.
So suffice it to say, the lines of communications between your entity and the City of Celine will be strong.
Strong and very beneficial for us to do that.
Very good.
We understand that.
Mr. Law, did you have a comment or question?
No, just to echo what, uh, Councilmember Gearbaugh raised, and, uh, I have the same concerns, and, and I'm glad, uh, that you have mentioned that that's going to be the case, and I hope it will continue to be that way. Um, I do have skepticism however about approaching how, uh, other communities outside the City of Celine will react to this. Um, I hope you prove me wrong as far as, uh, that their support will be overwhelming, but again, um, I always go back to how they always, and I understand they look out for their best interests and what's it in, what's in it for them.
Sure.
And, um, I think that's what many communities will be saying, but, uh, I certainly wish you well and hope that it, uh, does go successfully, but, um, as, as Councilmember Gearbaugh says, it is, some entity of it is involving taxpayer dollars, and I want to make sure that that is, uh, accounted for.
Sure, and there's always a faction of people that want to see things getting done and make sure that the organization is, is really viable before they jump on board, and we understand that. So this is a process, and it takes time. We'll do our best to educate everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Burgoyne.
Yeah, I, I'd like to say that, uh, the dollars that initially will be provided in the first four or five years will be the same economic development dollars that we're now using with the Chamber Commerce, Downtown Merchants, Picnic in the Park, and these other organizations, um, and the reporting will be more frequent. We've had quarterly reporting from those other agencies, uh, basically that the projects or the events and so forth, uh, have been done. So I envision that the reporting would be more frequent in the same type of pattern rather than less frequent.
Thank you, Mr. Burgoyne. Are there any additional questions for Ms. Shupko? Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, any additional comments, discussion pertaining to this motion? I would just like to add that, um, based on all the evidence and data that I've been able to get, gather, communities that have reached the Michigan Main Street Select Level have seen profound benefits, and I think an endorsement of this proposal by this council is a pro-business position, and, and I think will have a major impact in, in a good way, in a positive way, on our local economy for years to come. Um, and I don't like to speak for the mayor in her absence, but I know that Mayor Driscoll has invested a significant amount of time and energy in promoting this concept, and I think it's safe to say if she were here, she'd be a, a vote in the affirmative, so I just wanted to add that. Are there any other thoughts, comments from council? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is, I will need a motion to appoint City Manager Todd Campell to serve as the Celine Historic Downtown Alliance Board, as, to serve on, excuse me, the Celine Historic Downtown Alliance Board as an ex-officio member.
So moved?
Second.
Been moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Ivy. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries. Moving on to item 11 dash 70, Farmer's Market Use of District Library Parking Lot. The first motion is to acknowledge receipt of the April 26th, 2011 memo from Nancy Crisp, Market Manager.
Move.
Moved by Rhodes to acknowledge receipt, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gearbaugh. I see that Ms. Crisp is in the audience this evening, would you care to come forward and discuss your memorandum?
Um, we think our Tuesday market went really well last year, and we'd like to renew the, um, what are we calling that? I'm a little nervous here this morning. Uh, the agreement, the, the parking lot lease agreement, they have our Tuesday market at the Celine District Library again, so, and we've made that for a five-year period because we think it's just going to keep going. So that's the first thing. Did you want to just vote on that first, or, because then I also want to talk about the winter market.
Yeah, what, what, since you're up here, Ms. Crisp, why don't you, um, make comment on the, the two subsequent motions as well?
Okay. Then the other motion is, we're asking for, um, approval to have a city-sponsored winter's market this year. We had a, a winter market this, this last year that David Rhodes had in his office, and it went really well. It's small, and we'd like to make it bigger, and we've, um, we've found that we can have our winter market at Liberty School, which I'm so excited about. We can get 20 to 30 vendors in there, uh, it's easy access, uh, we have lots of parking, it's on a real, real busy road, um, and it's an indoor market, and I don't think there is an indoor market, farmer's market in this area that I know of, so I think it could really draw people to Celine. We would have liked to have had it downtown Celine, so we could have drawn people into the downtown area, but we couldn't find anything that was within our budget or large enough. If something comes up in the future, we can perhaps look at it then, but for now, we're, we're asking for it to be at Liberty School. One other question that was asked of me, what kinds of things will we sell at the market? Well, of course, we'll have some of our regular vendors, particularly in November and December. It's going to run from November through April, but we'll have lots of late produce, um, we'll have, uh, certainly all the Christmas gr- uh, greens, uh, wreaths and, and things like that. We'll have a lot of baked goods, um, that seems to be very popular, fresh eggs, that was very popular this year, uh, fresh roasted coffee beans, um, we'll have some crafts there, uh, we've got some people that have already showed in, shown interest, some wool mittens, which is, is nice and warm for winter, and aprons, and homemade wooden bowls and pencils, pen and pencil sets, uh, one of our vendors makes jewelry, we've got some soap, we've got soy candles, we'll probably have honey, there's just a lot of things, and I, and I have had a lot of interest in this, and I think probably more when people find out about it. Well, I, I think, I really anticipate our market being quite full.
Great, thank you, Ms. Crisp. Are there any questions? Mr. Ivy?
Thank you, Mayor Protem Marl. Nancy Crisp, thank you for coming to council this evening and, uh, presenting your proposals for the parking lot lease as well as the winter's farmer's market. I have no questions or comments regarding the parking lot lease, Nancy, but I did want to touch on a few things about the winter farmer's market.
Okay.
Uh, now, you're kind of making a quantum leap here from the number of vendors from the, the previous, uh, winter market to, to the proposed winter market. You're going from 10 to 20 vendors, that seems like a lot. Do, do you really think we can get 20?
Yes, I really do. We could only have 10 at the other location, and there were people that, there were vendors that were turned away. Um, so I, I, I've already got 10, um, applications, and I know I don't have all of them that, of the people that are interested, so I think I can. Now whether we can keep them all the way through, I think that's going to change.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Uh, we're, we're looking at a period of 26 weeks from November 5th through April 28th, and, uh, looking at your, uh, calculation for subcontractor labor, which, uh, in past budgets you referred to as wages, which, which really would be your compensation for the period in question, uh, $68 a week, which would be, uh, at $17 an hour equivalent to about four hours per week, uh, devoted to the winter farmer's market. That sounds about right?
Mm-hmm.
Looking down at your expenses, you've, uh, you've earmarked $850 for signage, elaborate on that.
Um, this is not an easy budget to make up because I don't know exactly what I'm going to do, but we need new signs for the winter market. I can't use the same signs, so I want to make really big ones, and I also want new signs to, to, um, to direct people to the market because it's new. Um, so I put a nice chunk in there, I might not use it all, but I, I put that chunk in there because I, um, I want plenty of, of, uh, of money for my signs. I don't, I probably won't use it all, but as you can see in the past, I've always zeroed out my, my income where sometimes I don't think I'm going to use all the money. I guess I could put that in net income, but I don't, I put it somewhere else where I might need it, um, so that's, that's why I did that.
Well, I, I raise a question, Nancy, because comparing this figure to previous budgets, this is extraordinarily high. I, I'm wondering if you've explored the, uh, Liberty sign, the electronic sign, the new one that we have outside of Liberty School. That is not going to be any cost to you. According to Joe Freeman with Community Ed, you can post on that sign on, on any given day in advance of the Saturday winter's farmer's market that you're having the market.
Well, you answered one of my questions because we hadn't asked him yet. I mean, we only wanted to go so far with this before we asked.
Well, Mr. Freeman today confirmed with me that that's free.
Good, good.
You can do that, no cost.
Mm-hmm, but we still need other signs around.
That, that might help to reduce that $850 somewhat, yes.
That might.
The other question I had, Nancy, was, you know, we have several, um, events that, that take place, uh, the craft shows, uh, the powwow in early April, and what conflict there might be potentially, uh, with your farmer's market and these other events. Have you considered that?
The only thing I've thought about is parking.
Yes.
And that, that could, it could either bring more people to our market or take away from our parking where they couldn't get in, so.
As I understand it, you're going to be at the south end of Liberty.
That's right.
Where the music entrance is.
Um, I'm not familiar with that, but David suggests, yes.
Yeah, and, and you will not be in conflict with the events that occur in the gym or auditorium.
Mr. Freeman didn't think so.
Right. Well, he confirmed that with me today on the phone, that you will not be in conflict with that.
Oh, okay.
And the only issue is parking, and hopefully, even though we might have a, a high attendance at those other events, there'll still be plenty of parking for our, our folks that want to visit the farmer's market. So I, I have no further questions, Nancy. I think your budget is reasonable, and I, I approve of it, and I, I heartily support all three of these motions that we have before council, uh, this, this evening, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ivy. Mr. Law?
I can't help the, uh, the unfortunate-ness that downtown's going to have because the farmer's market is not going to be there, at least for the winter. Uh, I know the summers probably helps, uh, in a great deal with the businesses that are down there, and, um, with the space that is available, I imagine, in some of the areas downtown. I was just curious how much they would charge for leasing that space. I know for the vendors that you have here, the 20, you probably obviously can't fit all 20 in, in a space that is available downtown, but I was just curious as to how much they charge, was it an exorbitant amount that?
Well, any, any amount on a consistent basis for 26 weeks probably would be too much for our budget. One of the things we were worried about is they, somebody might let us come in at a cheaper rate, but then they'd rent the space, and then we were gone. So I, I'm not familiar, I haven't really canvassed everybody to see what, what would work, but one of the things I do know is we need to have easy access into, um, a facility so all of the vendors can get all of their product in there. So if it's all carpeted or, you know, that kind of thing, that kind of concerned me a bit, and, and Liberty School is not. So I can't really answer the question how much. I, I wonder too, and if anything comes up where we can be downtown, uh, you know, inside, that would be great, but I, I, there just wasn't anything. David and I have been, had our, you know, eyes and ears open for the last year, just to see what would come up. You might speak to that, David, did you find anything?
No, I, I didn't, um, for a couple of reasons, one of which you alluded to already, and that is that if, um, space, which is empty now, and we start, the market gets leased out, then we're dead in the water, we have no place to go to that we could count on. We'd have to, um, recommunicate to everybody where we might be, where the market might be, if it could be. And, um, one of the other issues is that many of those downtown buildings are not fully handicap accessible, and we need to have that for our citizenry so everybody can avail themselves of the market. Um, and with respect to Councilmember Ivy's question about, comment about the signage costs, um, Nancy has put together an advisory committee, and that committee has recommended that there be more directional. that there be more directional signage for all of the markets around town. And so much of that cost is not attributable specifically to the winter market, but that sort of precipitated the need to put more signs around the community.
Yes, I can now, when I do buy something that I know is for all the markets, I can split it up, which is really nice.
Are there any additional questions for Mrs. Crisp? Okay, hearing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your presentation. Referring back to our first motion under section 11-70, I have a mover and a second to acknowledge receipt of the April 26, 2011 memo from Nancy Crisp, Market Manager. If there's no discussion, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Moving on, this is a motion to approve or not approve the parking lot lease agreement between the Celine District Library and the City of Celine for use of the library's parking lot for the weekly Tuesday farmer's market for a five-year period from June 2011 through September 30, 2016, and to authorize or not authorize the mayor and clerk to execute said agreement after review and approval by the city attorney.
Move to approve and authorize.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve and authorize. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries. And our final motion under this section is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proposed budget for the winter's farmer's market and to approve or not approve a winter's farmer's market to be held on Saturdays beginning November 2011 through April 2012 to be located at Liberty School.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll let Mr. Rhodes second that one. So it's been moved and seconded to approve. Discussion? Mr. Rhodes.
I wanted to thank the Celine District Library and the Celine Area Schools for providing space free of charge for this market, these markets to be held.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Any additional comments? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to Agenda Item 11-71, Appeal for Sewer Credit. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the April 27, 2011 memo from City Treasurer Bennett and the October 8, 2000 letter from Boyd Pace requesting a deduction of excessive sewage use charges for the premises at 731 and 733 West Michigan Ave.
Move to acknowledge receipt.
It's been moved by Gearbuck to acknowledge receipt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Ivey. Thank you, sir. Treasurer Bennett, would you care to make a comment or go over your memorandum?
We were approached by Mr. and Mrs. Pace earlier this fall when they would discover that they had a large leak that leaked in between the two floors. And they were curious as to whether or not there could be any kind of a relief on the sewer bill. And until we could get a better understanding of what kind of normal consumption, what's going to be resumed, we, you know, told them that we'd have to get, you know, establish back in to see what your normal usage would be before we could even come up with any, some sort of what the average amount of it was lost, because there was no way to measure that. So that's why there was the delay in getting the request to the city council. We did then, you know, when we discussed the dollar amount, we did tell them that we could, you know, the appeal, they wanted to continue the appeal to the city council. And so we went ahead and forwarded on to you for that, your attention at that matter. I did also want to bring to your attention, and I have in my memo, that we used to issue sewer credits for faulty appliances, and based on the same calculation that I present to you tonight for this sewer credit, we did do away with that as it became time-consuming and not very cost-efficient because the sewage is still going, at least into the storm sewer. So I'll let you make the decisions.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Are there any comments or questions? Mr. Ivey.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Marle. Mickey Joe.
Mm-hmm.
You stated that you needed to see future history of usage.
We needed to see, if I said future history, that's not what I meant. We needed to see future consumptions to establish.
Future consumption. Okay. Would it not have been an option to go back and look at past history of usage?
It was an option. However, during that time, they also lost a tenant in that building, and therefore, they had more tenants prior to the leak than after the leak. So we wanted to make sure we had a fair calculation.
So previous history, Mary Jo, would not have been relevant to what you needed to find out, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for our city treasurer? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bennett.
You're welcome.
If there's no further discussion relating to this motion, I'll call the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries. The subsequent motion is to approve or not approve the request of Boyd Pace for a waiver of excessive sewage use charges to 731 and 733 West Michigan Ave for the October 2010 and January 2011 quarterly billings estimated at 100 gallons or 280 in sewage usage charges.
Move to approve.
Support.
It's been moved by Ivey, seconded by Rhodes to approve. Discussion? Mr. Ivey.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Marle. Having reviewed the documents that were presented with the agenda package for this agenda item, looking at the most recent revision in policy that was implemented on June 1 of 1993, some 18 years ago, I quote, "Water and sewer credits will be granted in any 12-month period, July to July, not to exceed $100 to domestic water users due to a defective appliance, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera." Well, okay, at that time, 18 years ago, $100 may have been a realistic figure as far as whatever credits the city might approve. I went back and looked at my water bill, because I've lived in Celine for 18 years. And I looked at my water bill and what I would consider a peak consumption period, which would have been in the summer. And the bill that I paid in October of 1993 was $61 and change. Okay. Looking at 2010, the same period, my water bill was $159.99. That's two and a half times as much as it was in 1993. So I think if we are going to look at this issue from the standpoint of our current policy and thinking if this policy is fair, I think we would be wise to increase the amount where it reads not to exceed $100. I think we should probably look at maybe $200 or maybe even $300. I think that would be, in fairness, to the increase in the cost for water and sewer that we've achieved here in the last 18 years. I spoke to Mr. Pace earlier today, and he was in business here in Celine for many years. He operated the Water Softener Hospital on West Michigan Ave and provided a service to many of us here in the community who did not have the benefits that we now have with our much-improved water system. And I think he provided a great service. He paid his bills. He's already paid this $280. He's just looking for a little relief. So I urge my colleagues to support the motion that's been made to approve the waiver of these costs. And I also would propose that we change our policy so that the amount, as I have determined here in the policy that exists, is changed from $100 to $300. Thank you.
Mr. Gearbuck.
I'd like to clarify that the policy that Mr. Ivey's referring to was canceled by a motion of counsel in April of 1996. So that policy of '93 appears to be no longer in effect, correct? Stand corrected. Right.
The memo I'm referring to, Councilmember Gearbuck, is dated June 1, 1993.
Right. And then there's an attachment behind that memo dated April 25, 1996, which was to the Department of Public Works stating, "Please be advised that the Celine City Council meeting on April 15 terminated the water sewer bill credit policy. The action taken was as follows," and it indicates that it passed. So there is no policy, and that the recommendation of, which would have been Councilmember Gretchen Driscoll at the time, was that because the city spends so much time and effort to assist homeowners in avoiding excessive water and sewer bills, I believe that crediting homeowners for excessive water usage is unnecessary. So my understanding is that council at that point in time decided that it no longer felt it was cost-effective to go back and try and assess any of that, so they did away completely with the credit by eliminating that policy. So I mean, at this point, I'm going with the policy that I believe is in effect, and I, being a councilman, in past periods have supported not changing this policy at this time, so I would not be in favor of this motion.
So I stand corrected that we have a policy in place that we are not going to entertain any credits to homeowners for excessive water usage.
That's correct.
I'm sorry. Mr. Rhodes.
I supported this motion with full knowledge that we had no existing policy. And I also understand that that '93 policy of up to $100 appeared to take into consideration not only water that was being metered, but with the assumption it was going through the sewage system. They referred to water and sewer both. And I can also understand why it was rescinded in '96 because the steps which the city took upon themselves to verify that an individual qualified to receive that kind of credit were really very cumbersome and cost more than $100 to do. So however, in this particular case, it does appear that the water did not, in fact, go back through the sewage system, and so therefore did not cost the city anything, did not place a burden on the sewage system. And they have not asked for a water credit, even though in theory I suppose they could have, because they acknowledge the fact that that water did, in fact, run through the meter. And so they're not asking for anything, in my opinion, out of the ordinary, out of extra. And I believe that it should be granted. We don't have a policy that says we will not. We just have rescinded a previous policy and left a void. And I think in, by doing that, it has been left up to individual, up to council members to decide how to act on individual requests. And for that reason, I would support this item.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Any additional comments? Mr. Law.
Just a question on the difference between a sewer credit and a water credit. Are they one and the same, given the fact that, as Mr. Rhodes pointed out, you don't have the water going through the sewer system for a water credit? With a sewer credit, is that the same as? I don't know if it's an apples to apples or whatever it is compared to.
Well, we typically, we use the water reading, the water meter reading, to also determine the amount of sanitary sewer, because typically speaking, the water that comes out of your faucet, for the most part, goes down your drain at some point. So it's the same. And obviously, this would be, you know, exception rather than the rule.
They are separate unit costs, though, for various sewer...
Yes, yes.
If I answered your question.
Right, correct. You may recall the current race day that we did a year and a half ago, whatever it was, the actual water rate went up and the sewer rate went down. So there are two, that's around about a way of answering your question, that, yes, they're two separate.
Did you have, excuse me, an additional question, Mr. Law?
No.
No? Any other comments pertaining to this motion? Then I will call the question. All those in favor of the motion to approve the request by Boyd Pace for a waiver of excessive sewage charges signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Did you get that, City Clerk?
I think so.
Let's do it by a show of hands. Those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Those opposed, please raise your hand. Deadlocked. So no action. All right, moving on to our added new business item, 11-72. This is a motion to acknowledge the verbal report from City Manager Campbell and to approve or not approve the location parking agreement between the City of Celine and the Drunken Pig Productions, LLC, for the use of the parking lot at Curtis Park on May 11 and May 12, 2011, and to authorize or not authorize the mayor pro tem to execute said agreement.
So move.
All right, moved by Rhodes to approve?
To approve, yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Seconded by Mr. Gearbuck. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. And Art Crapp is also here. He's been dealing with this movie company. And just as a sidebar, the scout, the location scout, he has the exact same name as I do. So it's kind of weird when you talk to a guy on the phone that has your same name. But in any case, Art, please, if I leave anything out, like I said, because he is the one that's been diligently working with them, they will be shooting next, I'm sorry, filming a movie off of Macon Road at the Bed and Breakfast, just outside of town, and looking for a place to park a number of their vehicles, their equipment. You know, they have semis with equipment and those sort of things, as well as staff parking, and they really don't, there's a little big field out there, but they'd rather not park out there. So we, and there's no very good place to get from there, from point A to point B, if you will. So we were looking for places that were sizable, and we pointed them in the direction of the south end of Curtis Park, where it's wide open, as high ground as you get in Curtis Park. Obviously, we have made them aware of, and they've driven it, made them aware of the potential for water problems. So, and there's only one way in and one way out. But this would be for, they would actually move in next Wednesday afternoon, evening, and then they'd be filming on Thursday and then leaving. Is that correct? So we do not have a formal policy in place. You may recall, we have, for past films that have been in the community or near the community, we have done such things. We've rented, we have at our DPW facility, we have an old street light, which we rented to them, I think, for $100. They used a city bench that we had stored out there for, you know, $100 type of thing. We did, for the one that was filmed at Liberty School, they rented some of our off-duty police officers for security and for traffic control, that type of thing. So we have done those things, but we don't, because it is so infrequent and, you know, since the film credit will be going away or greatly dramatically reduced, I don't know that there's going to be a huge need. But we've been flexible enough to work with folks. Because, but some communities do, we have looked at a little bit about, well, should we have, should we propose to city council an official policy and that type of thing? But because of the infrequency, we have not at this point. But, so we bring this before you, and City Attorney Grossman has reviewed, and actually, as you'll see, the two items that are in bold, those are proposed changes that we've presented, have not heard back from them. But those are proposed changes. And as I talked with Mr. Marle this afternoon about bringing this on, I think we got, we received this yesterday, or I'm sorry, Friday, was it Friday, I believe, we received this Friday afternoon. So, but wanted to try and turn it around, see how they will. They will be filming next week. They will be filming next week prior to the next council meeting, but it was thought that this would be a good, anytime we can get our name out there is a good thing, so. So I, the request is for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Mr. Long.
Is there any cost to the city as far as police and as far as other security issues and the park access to the general public that day?
To answer your question, no, we're not aware of any, they've not requested any additional security, and certainly we have our police, you know, cruising around 24/7. As far as, we did check with Parks and Rec, because obviously, Seline baseball, softball, use those facilities. My understanding is they've talked with the coaches and SYBNS, and there, there's no problem with that. They would, because they would, we would make sure that there's a space for folks to be out there, utilize that for the baseball, the ball fields.
So would the park be open for public access while they're filming, or is it closed off until they're done?
No, it'll be opened up, but, and they're not filming in the park, they're off-site. You know, it would be open to the public, we would just utilize that space on the south end where it's wide open, and with the dirt, the gravel parking area.
There are also many U.S. State Hall parking lots, too, because there's 57 cars, five semis, and potentially 10 other vehicles, and St. Paul's is not large enough to accommodate all of them. There'll also be parking two semis on Macon Road there, and Washtenaw County Sheriff has agreed to have two officers stand by during the entire time those vehicles are parked along the side of the road there. If you know that road, it has a huge dip, ditch, and so, anyways, they want the two large semis as close to the filming as possible, but everybody else can be some ways away.
Thank you. Is that it? Mr. Long.
Oh, Mr. Tahar was.
Were you first, Mr. Tahar? I'm sorry.
Thank you. Do we, so do we know what types of vehicles will be parked in the park, and is the, is the parking lot able to take the weight without being damaged, especially if it's wet?
My understanding is there'll be passenger vehicles, there'll be, are all the semis parked on site, on the filming site?
No. I don't know where they're going to park, there's five semis. I know two are going to be up the road, and I don't know where the other three are going to be, and then there's another 10 or so trucks, and trucks will vary in size.
Yeah, so we, I mean, we don't have concerns, I mean, it's pretty hard packed up there, and, I mean, we, our dump trucks are up there, and so, and this, again, for a very short period of time, there's not going to be excessive, my understanding, a lot of excessive in and out, I mean, they're going to be filming, and so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tahar. Mr. Gierbach.
Similar concern, just wanted to make sure that it wasn't going to become a bug.
I just wanted to add that, as many of you are aware, I'm very cognizant of our council guidelines that were adopted in 2002 that state that council members will be given a sufficient amount of time to discern and make decisions, and so I don't take the decision lightly to acquiesce to city staff's recommendation that this be added to the agenda. However, since it is so time-sensitive, I thought it was appropriate, and of course, you all are afforded the right and the privilege to give it an up or down vote, depending on how you feel about this. So, is there any additional questions or any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve, signify and authorize, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to discussion items, commission and committee reports from council members. Mr. Tahar.
The Arts and Culture Committee has received a proposed budget from Mr. Detroit for the public art project, and it's well within the funding that's available.
Thank you for that update. Mr. Long.
Just the youth council is wrapping up its series of meetings for the year. I believe there's one more, and it's going to be later this month before the kids are off for the summer, and they're pleased with the results of this year's meetings, and they were particularly pleased with the results of the Seline Salutes Award, which they, of course, again, participated in to an extent as far as their nomination of a Youth of the Year.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Long. Mr. Rhodes.
Environmental Commission started out the year in really good shape, quite active. We have, I have five items that come under the Environmental Commission. The first one is that the commission has begun to have some dialogue about the contents of the bylaws vis-a-vis the charter and the ordinances that relate to the responsibilities of the Environmental Commission, and will continue that dialogue for a while here until we reach agreement on how we believe we should proceed. Second item is that we are obtaining a pop-up canopy tent that will have Environmental Commission printed on all four sides of it, be green, of course, and we will use that at the various farmers' markets and also other events around town where the Environmental Commission wishes to have a presence. The, at the Saturday market, at least, that tent space will be shared with the master gardeners, who right now have to kind of sit out in the, open in the sun or the rain or whatever, and this has been cleared with Ms. Crisp. And we would also share that space then with other organizations who are looking to hand out information, one of which could be the Seline Historic Downtown Alliance Group that we passed action on this evening, as well as the rec center for memberships and other items. And I believe that Connie DeHaan, who is our city-assigned liaison for secretarial purposes, will be the scheduler of that. It may be three weeks or so before that tent comes in and is available. The third item is the commission has selected a style and a color for recycled containers, and that will be going to, again, the Seline Historic Downtown Alliance at their meeting tomorrow evening for coordination with them, and then would come to City Council for approval of style, color, and placement. We anticipate purchasing five of those units. The fourth item relates to the flyer that I passed out, the rain barrel class. We have done some preliminary preparation work and have 15 rain barrels now that are ready for final assembly by citizens who are interested, and that assembly will take place at the rec center, who have volunteered the use of their space, no charge, on Monday, May 9th, from 7:00 to 8:00, and it's probably going to be too late for those watching it at home on Channel 18, but one can call the rec center, main number 4293502, to register for their program, and the fee is $45, which includes the barrel and all of the appurtenances required to make it function properly. And then the last item, the Environmental Commission is co-sponsoring an electronic waste recycling event with the teen center, and that will be held on June 4th. At the, at the teen center, there'll be more information coming out. The teen center board meets tomorrow night to finalize the time on that, but I suspect it'll probably be something like 9:00 to 4:00 on June 4th, which is a Saturday. And so those of you who might have been tempted to take your electronic waste up to Pioneer High School this weekend, don't do it. Save it for us. That's it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. And one quick question, well, I guess more of a comment, really, because I'm pretty sure I'm aware of what the answer is, but at the make-your-own-rain-barrel workshop, am I correct in saying that the barrel itself is something that is recycled from our PCF facility?
That's correct. It is.
So not only is making rain barrel green and environmentally conscious, but utilizing or recycling these, these containers adds an additional benefit? Very good. Any other commission or committee reports? Any other reports or announcements? Hearing none. Mr. Campbell, do you want to give us a brief update on the Tour of Washtenaw County Bike Race?
Absolutely, actually, I'm going to defer to Mr. Trapp.
Mr. Trapp, okay, very good.
Well, the tour of Washtenaw is still May 14th, and it's 55 miles for most folks, and for the pros, it's going to be 80 miles. It'll be, for most folks, 26 miles of paved road and four, and 28 miles of dirt road, which will fall into six different sections. The race that was supposed to be held in Ann Arbor on Friday and also on Sunday, both have been canceled, so the entire tour of Washtenaw is going to be in Seline, or at least start and end in Seline. We have about 90 volunteers, at least at this point in time, which will provide some money for the two lacrosse teams, both men and women, for the crew team, and hopefully for the fiddlers and the Chamber of Commerce. The expo will be held in the parking lot, number four, which is behind Bennys or Brecken, and will be from 10:30 till 6:00. We're going to have music. We will have the Kiwanis and Lions Club, and we will also have a beverage tent that will be handled by the downtown merchants to include beer and wine. There'll also be a blow-up for kids and also be a kids' bike rodeo, and in that rodeo, they will teach the kids not only how to ride the bikes, but also provide them with a helmet if they don't have one, and also, those that do have the helmet, they will teach them how to properly put it on, wear it, and adjust it. The health portion of this event, we will have Rob Boer, the chiropractor, Flat Out Bread, doing a demonstration, New Era Chiropractors, Chef Musto from Seline Area Schools doing a demonstration, Julie Har from the schools, Steve Bieber, and St. Joseph's Hospital having a small tent to talk about health in general. We, right now, have contacted 16 bike vendors. We have two positive responses as of this morning, and we're still looking at another dozen or so, waiting for their phone calls to come back. We set up a group of volunteers to handle things for the expo, so that we are not requiring the DPW to help us out in this regard. There's a, trying to do a Friday afternoon race packet pickup from 3:00 to 6:00, which would hopefully bring some of the racers into town so that they can pick their packets up, and maybe have a few people stop off and utilize some of our restaurants and, you know, other retail shops in the city. Right now, the budget that I'm using, I have $1,500 in revenue, and I have spent $1,461.25 of that $1,500. There's a couple other things that I still need. I need a banner, and I got logos this morning, so we'll try to get the banner put together over the next couple days and have that made and shipped over. American Aqua has donated 15 5-gallon bottles of water, cooler, and cups, so that we won't have an excessive amount of water bottles around the parking lot. And the race organizers, I've tried to contact them today, they have reduced the fees for the race itself up until the race day. It went from $75 to $50, and the pros from $85 to $65. And I don't know if that's indicative of that they're not getting the response they thought, or they're just being overly kind, but whatever the situation is, we'll have to work with it. The motels, the Fairfield and the Courtyard in Ann Arbor have provided special rates for those people that are out of town. We have three major sponsors for the race, St. Joseph's Mercy Hospital, Flat Out Bread, and New Step. Powerhouse Gym has also indicated that they're interested, but have not responded back either with a check or with a return phone call. The Tour of Washtenaw is both an email site and also a Facebook site, and I was on the site this morning, and there was a comment that I thought was pretty epic. Joe, and I probably won't pronounce his name right, but Lekovich indicated that he had ridden 55 miles the other day in the rain, the dirt, and whatever, and his comment was it was epic, and it's a race for strong men and women. So we'll see how that all comes out. Any questions or comments, or?
Any questions for Mr. Trapp? Mr. Ivey.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Art, of the $1,500 budget, can you give us a figure as to how much was spent on promotional advertising for the event?
Nothing.
Not a penny?
No.
We haven't gone to our local news sources and?
What I have spent the money on was a tent, some signage for parking, because I think that's going to be critical. And also, I have spent money on a disc jockey and a guard for the parking lot itself, so that we don't have people wandering around the street with a glass of beer, a glass of wine, so. We do have advertising that I'm getting for free. I'll be on the Lucy Anne Lance Show and a couple of other things that, you know, that has been picked up. Our good friend here, Tran, has publicized it in the patch, and we will have other opportunities, but not at any cost to us, so.
Great, thank you.
Any additional questions for Mr. Trapp? Thank you, Mr. Trapp, appreciate the presentation. Moving on then, our final item under the discussion section is, prior to the meeting this evening, City Manager Campbell handed me an email from MML regarding the Region 1A, or Region 1, excuse me, meeting that's going to be taking place this Friday in Hamtramck, and this email is pertaining to the desire on behalf of the league to designate somebody from Seline City Council or city staff to be the incoming secretary for this next fiscal year, and then, secretary is just an honorary title, and then that will follow with them, that same individual being the vice chair, and then eventually the chair of the Region 1 Department, I guess, of Michigan Municipal League. So the question that is before you is twofold. One, I know that Mr. Rhodes and Mr. Campbell will be attending the meeting on Friday, but in addition to that, is there anybody here who would be interested in assuming the position as honorary secretary of Region 1A of Michigan Municipal League? Mr. Campbell, do you care to comment?
Sure, if I might, thank you. Essentially, as Mr. Marl pointed out, you start as secretary, then next year, you, this person would serve as the vice chair, and I'm not sure where the regional meeting is next year, but that's where, and then you would be asked to facilitate, I believe, the regional awards that you voted on, you know, at the annual meeting for the one award And then the next year, you would be served as the chair, and then it would also, it would be here in Seline, at some place, whether it be here at City Hall or some other location. And then you would essentially help to work with, I mean, obviously, city staff would help, too, but work with MML to facilitate that particular meeting.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Campbell, I apologize for interrupting, but in addition, it says here in the email that the regional chairs, and obviously, for those of you who are unaware, there are various regions in the state, but the regional chairs also make up the nominating committee for the league board of trustees. So in addition to serving as an officer for Region 1, you would also be a member of the nominating committee, which I can't imagine meets that frequently.
No.
Yeah. Is there anybody who would have an interest in that?
I'm trying to reduce my workload and not increase it.
Anybody? Well, perhaps it will fall to me by default. I'd have to possibly finesse my schedule to see if I could go on Friday, so my one question would be, do I need to be there?
Yeah, I can find that out and let you know.
Okay, if you would do that, I would appreciate that.
We'd be happy to nominate you in your absence.
Yeah, I'm sure you would. So in addition to Mr. Rhodes and Mr. Campbell, the reason Mr. Campbell asked that I bring this up is mainly for carpooling purposes. Is anyone else planning to attend the Region 1 meeting on Friday in Hamtramck? Basically, an all-day thing. Okay, so it looks like at the moment, just you and Mr. Rhodes, Mr. Campbell, and possibly, depending on my schedule, myself as well. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. The only other thing that I think ought to be announced is we have an election tomorrow, so for those of you in the audience and those of you who are sitting up at this dais, please remember to vote. please remember to vote. I guess we'll move on to public comment. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question to City Council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Mary Laronas, 373 West Bennett. I'd like to comment on the electronic sign in front of Liberty School. The sign is an irritation for a very good reason. The city has an ordinance banning such moving signs within the city limits. The school does not have to obey the ordinance, so they chose not to. Not only is a sign dangerous, it is pretty much useless. I frequently see such things as "coming soon" or "register now" or "Saturday at 8:00 P.M.," but I rarely see "what's coming soon" or "what I should register for." I have never been able to get a complete message, so if the farmer's market chose to advertise on that sign, I might see Saturdays from 8:00 a.m. till 12:00 noon, or I might see winter farmer's market, but I rarely, I don't think I would ever see those two things all at once, because you can't see it all while you're driving by. So, I would hope the farmer's market would not rely solely on the electronic sign at Liberty School to get out its message. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Mary Hess, 600 Canterbury. On the Main Street program, I'm hoping that we haven't shot our foot off, because if it's a Michigan grant, and I'm sure they would like to have us comply with ADA, and I don't think the 36-inch path will cut it. Other thing is, I'd like to know how the dirt, the hole in the ground is doing with the, I noticed we have some soil erosion tape around it, and I had talked as far as, and you had mentioned that there was a drain to go in or something. Third thing is, I talked to Mark Breckenridge, and my concern, again, as I've talked to, I think, the last couple of years, is an evacuation program on tornado as far as our mobile home park. I think that they are in jeopardy should a tornado come through, and I have asked if we could have a couple points of place that they might be able to go. On Sunday, our pastor at the Methodist Church said that apparently they had been designated at one time for the two new, or not new now, but the elementary schools. And so, whether that could be utilized, also the senior center, the hall has no windows, but I do think as caretakers of the city and the mobile home, which would definitely be in jeopardy, Mr. Breckenridge did comment as far as why we don't really publicize as a city, because you don't want people out necessarily when the sirens are going, but that he did understand, as far as the mobile home park, that that definitely is a completely different issue as far as safety and preparing. In the brochures that he sent me and said I could get more for the mobile home park, on page 12, it said, "Select a safe place to go prior to an evacuation." It's like anything, that's an excitement or anxiety when something happens. I think it's important, and I think it's important that the city somehow have something for these people. I don't think any of you have any relatives that lives in the mobile home park, but I'm sure if you did, you'd definitely want to know where a possible safe place is for them to go in case they have to evacuate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. And just for the record, I believe that either a year ago or two years ago, our chief of police did make a PSA on Channel 18 regarding emergency situations, but that is something that I think we'll continue to look at. In addition, Mr. Campbell, Mrs. Hess has raised the issue, and actually, I've been contacted by a few others. Do you want to give a very brief update regarding the status of the former Concanon property?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Marl. As we're referring to it in a positive light now, is 147 West Michigan, as opposed to some of the other names that's been coined the last couple of years, so. But anyway, 147 West Michigan, it is looking better. They still have to, as you'll, obviously, as anybody drives by it with all the rain we've had, there is still some ponding on the west end. There is a drainage structure to put in. Unfortunately, two weeks ago, when they initially planned on it that day, apparently, they were rained off in putting it in, and they also have to redesign it, because even on the plan, the former, the plans of the former project, where they have the structure hooking into the storm system, there's actually a electric pole right in the middle. So, they've had to make some, they have to make some modifications, which is not a big deal. They're actually, I believe, going to use some of the concrete pipe that's already still on-site. But that is a plan. They did install the
Cell fence.
Cell fence, thank you. The cell fence for erosion control, and that's part, is part of their permit, erosion control permit through the county. So, that hopefully will be done sooner rather than later. Obviously, as we all know as well, that we've had a lot of rain, and so that certainly does not help matters. But they had also talked about pumping the water out so they could get to it. Then, once that's established, once it's draining properly, my understanding is, they will also be putting topsoil and seeding it, so it'll be as a park-like setting, if you will, so.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Are there any other public comments? Okay, please remember that we have a budget work session on May 9th at 6:30 here in the council chambers, and then we have our next regular meeting on May 16th, 2011, at 7:30 P.M. Is there any additional business to come before Celine City Council this evening? Hearing none? I'm sorry, Mr. Rhodes?
Just an additional comment on 147 West Michigan Avenue. For those who might not have been by lately, the cyclone fence has been removed. Looks much better.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting at 9:11 P.M.
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Ivy, seconded by Gierbaugh to adjourn the regular council meeting at 9:11. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. This meeting is adjourned.